It's. Poor Dave, he kept coming up going, what are you doing? And put the carcass back to the other bones. He seems fine.
That's good.
Except today, it does look like snow.
Yeah.
I let him out. I couldn't get him to come back in.
That happens with Susie too. I'm like, please come, please come inside. I did.
He's so old and they're laying in the wet snow, his arthritis of his hips. It's like when he, when he finally does get up, he can't walk. Can we talk about this in the meeting? You gonna talk about this in the meeting?
What's that? Uh, no. Oh, someone back. I didn't look back.
And thank you very often. It's turning, nothing important, yes, your point. I have not heard anything back from the twenty seventeen FEMA. All that got submitted.
Really?
So I haven't.
I think I was done. I think we signed like last papers today.
Come back later.
I know, I know.
The worst thing is when they get strung out and they, they change people. So you, you have to.
Yeah, but we're lucky because the guy is in Oakland. You know, I think on the terms of the minutes, sorry for that late note here, but I think you've got the consolidated price spectrum reversed.
You know, when I rewatched that, that's what I do, right? Once I set up here. Consolidated in two eleven. Oh, yeah. I'll fix some more hill spelling.
Maybe next week. The guy on the North Taylor Road might be coming in next week. Next time. He was outraged. He had five hours in mailbox. Well, everybody else in town had to. That's a lot of mine. You know, with the state, I don't think. Please, Bob, it's not a flower mailbox.
No.
But I'm not lying, darling.
Yeah, I think so.
We're broadcasting?
I think to YouTube.
What? We can't be.
Yeah, shovel out my. Yeah.
Right.
Or don't, we need okay.
Or don't.
This is first, there's no mail. I know we were close today, but there's no narrative from them today.
Let's could be she go and get to the mail slot.
Oh.
Yeah, I got mail.
I thought that that shuttle.
I don't think so.
Supposed to.
Well, maybe I'll look. You see the tower is up?
Yeah.
I don't know how to get it up there. That's a long way up. They didn't have a crane. They still gotta put a topper on it. On the very top and. So is that like an antenna or? Yeah, the antenna still has to go up. Oh, it is? Okay.
Lovely.
I, I thought that was part of the deal, so. Cause oh, it could have been maybe it wasn't done before she came, maybe.
That's possible.
Maybe that he did it after.
Yeah.
I would say a lot of people didn't receive mail today.
I never get email. Never have a mailbox.
That'll do it then.
Show you the pictures, my first, the first snow, first of the season, right in my ditch. They love that ditch. But yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We had like four people in the ditch. Last year we were only two, but now I have one already. And also that, cause you're going, cause you're going up and the, and the, it radiates down into that ditch. So you're going up around that curve.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order and we will do pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Under our indivisible liberty of justice for all.
Everybody do all right on the minutes.
Yes, yeah.
Except the low, uh, minutes as amended. Vote, freeze it.
There we go.
Okay, let's get right to the difficult ones. Roads, the winter maintenance. We close. More hill from the dump to the bottom of the hill. And we close the, um, bottle hill road. From, um, caravans, bottom of the hill. To, um, actually the caravans at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
Two sixty seven, I think it's right where it is. And this year we're gonna add, as we discussed last meeting. The Blake Hill Bridge. So I'll make a motion that those three items get closed for winter maintenance. Just to clarify on Blake Hill Bridge. This.
Thank you.
And then we'll do the discussion. On the Blake Hill Bridge, yes. Uh, that will, so the plowing will go up to the Blake Hill Bridge on both, from both sides. Yes, okay, yes. Uh, Lee will have to, uh, negotiate between, uh, landlords on both sides. And tomorrow I'll, I'll meet with the post office, cause didn't think about that until this weekend. They need to know, cause that's gonna disrupt their. And tomorrow I'll also notify EMT, so they can change their signs.
Very good.
That's about it. Any other question? Will there be, um, barriers placed in front of the bridge? Yes, on both sides. Yes. If, uh, the state doesn't, which I think they will, uh, we will have to. Yep. You guys? Ready to vote? Yes. We're not gonna do policies today. Road Committee work. Oh, I go over that? Oh, uh, yes, um. I met with FEMA on the May storm on Friday. We completed all the reviews. Uh, over the weekend, I retyped everything and sent it to them this morning. And we got our final signatures this afternoon. So I think we are pretty well done on the May storm. The total should be around a hundred thousand for the Pike. And about seventy thousand for the, um, the town, um, Lee stuff.
Wonderful.
So it should be a good, good amount of change.
Thank you, Bob. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, that was a huge. Huge effort. Yes, Donovan Carey champion.
Being minus spread out over three years.
Oh, something that did come up on that though, and linking guys to look at it is just a rough thing. Mike, what's all of, and I worked, Mike actually did it. What came out from the meeting was we should have a, a contract between us and Lee to do all of this. It came up in a minute luckily, because FEMA required it, us to have that. The only thing I could give them was the minutes where we stated that we were gonna work on getting, um, a contract. So, um, Mike did this. I'll give you. Give you that. And. Um, just take a look at it at your leisure. Um, I had some rough things that for us to chop at and stuff like that, so. It'll be, uh. Something we can work on anyway.
Wonderful.
Nothing in a hurry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um.
This is great.
That was Mike that did it.
Thank you, Mike.
The shed, okay, um, I use, uh, Hillview mini barns. And they came in at just under two thousand with a ninety-five dollar delivery.
Wonderful.
Nice. They can have it here by the twenty-first.
Wonderful.
So I signed the contract, sent it to them. I give the bill to you. We didn't do it.
You didn't send it to them?
Didn't I give it to you?
No.
I think they did.
In these. Uh, did you happen to get a W nine?
Or something like that.
Are buying.
And it's not a service.
A product, right?
They're building it, but they're delivering it all built.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I have, make sure I get a copy of the many of you. Thanks for putting the transfers. Thank you. You know, I like people.
Okay, so that should be good.
Was there other road committee updates or was the contract that?
The, on the road committee thing, um, we're still waiting for that program.
Oh, gotcha. So the sun holds.
And I just need.
Who's gonna be entering that information into that program?
We'll see.
Just let me know.
Yeah.
Cause my computer is working better from home, so I can do a lot more from home too, so.
I'll, I'll call again on the, that program.
So just to clarify, you, you made the down thing five hundred?
Yes. That you can hold off until the next meeting. But that other one, it would be nice to get that paid. Well. Where are we right? Fourth, eighteenth is the next meeting.
Yep.
Shoot. Oh, no, it's all right.
When are they delivering?
The twenty-first.
Okay.
We'll have a check on, on the twenty-first, okay.
Okay. And this is a place I could walk in and buy a shed already built.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't need.
Yeah. Okay, where was I? Expectation shed. I, I told Megan about it, they're cleaning this space off. Maybe. Okay, on, uh, LG two thousand and three, we received comments from KV Cog. Um, I sent them over to, uh, Sue and Heather Roberts. Uh, so I'm sure they're chucking bits.
Yeah.
Didn't seem like there was a lot of them.
I was gonna ask if there were money.
It seemed like it was.
That's good.
Do we have a copy of that, the file?
What they did was they took our land use ordinance. It's in Word, so what they did was they put the comments on the side, so you have to go on the side. So how do you get a copy of it? Without copying the whole. That'll print.
Well, yeah.
Could we just view the pages with the?
Did I email it to you?
Yeah, just the page. You can email it to me, cause I can pull and just print the pages that I need.
Oh, that'd be so long, but yeah, if they just.
Right, yeah, that way, that way I have something for the file and, um, I can't find the land use ordinance. Current land use ordinance on, on, in the town files.
Current one, uh, Heather Roberts.
Oh, okay. Because that's, it's not anywhere in.
She has it on her computer? Okay.
Yeah, why wouldn't we have one on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask Heather to put it on.
It's like twenty nineteen was the last one on there or something like that.
But where did Heather get it from?
She, she did it all.
Yeah, but.
On her own computer.
Twenty nineteen?
Yeah, the last time when I happened.
Oh, no.
I had this.
So we should have.
I need a hard, I need that electronic copy every single year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't have it. I can't find them anyway. I looked everywhere and I can't find them.
The might, I feel like I have.
And like maybe if they're, unless they're on the website, maybe, but I still need to have the electronic.
You check downstairs?
That I have, well, I need, I need the electronic file that they're working on.
Some ordinances in here.
No, those are empty. Those, that's, that's.
But it had to be.
That's only shore lands, I don't need.
It had to be on the computer at some point.
So you need twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, so land use ordinance.
Were they changed in?
I don't know, or whatever the last, whatever the last revisions are, um, cause I just can't find the electronic bottles.
Yeah, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. They were changing all.
Yeah, I don't, I can't find them.
And when you reprinted those, Bob, cause I know you had to printer print them, I'm sure we gave them a computer file from somewhere.
Unless, yeah, if they're keeping it on their computer, they, they need to not do that.
Good way, heaven.
I think, I'll take a deep, I'll take a dive, cause I think Sue has emailed them to me in the past.
Okay.
So I'll see if I can.
What? Was it Alice was trying to do?
Are they all on the website or are they in PDF form or Word form?
Okay.
In PDF form.
Yeah, see, I need some work.
The. They were, they are on the computer somewhere because Alice Kents was trying to reformat it. And renumber things, and that's what we were having discussions back and forth for.
All right.
I would have to save.
I wouldn't trust those though.
I don't know where they are then.
Yeah, those are.
I've looked.
Weird, yeah.
I'll take a little. I feel like I have at least. A majority, I would say of those, if not.
All right, yeah, I am, yeah, I'm supposed to be above the records.
Yeah, the, so twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three coordinates are on here.
And the Adobe format, all right.
And I can change them to Word format if you want.
Um, we'll see, I will, I'd rather get it from the source if we can.
Right.
Perfect, all right, thank you. I can read it all.
Good. Okay, uh, we have scheduled a special town meeting for December eighteenth. That's the next selectmen's meeting to rescind the financial policy ordinance that was made. Back some years ago. It's all I wanted to say.
Was, was that question okay once the, once the revision was made after you gave it to me?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there should be three articles, one to adjourn. Yeah, and the dates were all set.
That in there in the.
Okay. And when? Are you gonna post them?
Um, actually, I can't. That's the clerk. The clerk, that's a special time meeting. The clerk's gonna do that. Unless there's. Unless she doesn't, then I will.
Okay.
But that's the clerks, the clerk does all the town meetings, so that should, she should be doing all that.
We have to do a.
Uh, that would be, I'm not sure with the new electronic requirements, if they're making people do that anymore, that would be a Heather question.
What's that?
If it's required in that KJ.
No.
I think just down our spots.
I think if we do our green spots and, and we have it online, I think that's enough.
Yep. So I mean, somebody make sure they get the copy to me too. Oh.
Yeah, I can send it, yeah. I can actually ask it all of you right now.
Hmm, perfect.
Um, we have to do that finally, Anna.
Yes, all you have to do is, you don't have to.
Oh, we, cause we didn't know, we.
And that's why I was desperate for the meeting minute or the video, because I hadn't written it down and I'm like, and I. And then as I'm watching the video, I'm like, now I know why I wasn't writing it down, because I was doing the previous motion and it just went over and I was like.
We must have gone distracted signing it and didn't, um.
We literally were totally.
Didn't actually finish it. Processed.
So what are we doing?
What was our, what was our motion?
Make a motion that we accept the supplemental tax warrant for maps. Our eleven lots twenty-five. Well, that's it. In the amount of four thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Vote, freeze it.
Perfect.
Okay, good.
I was like, oh my god, I believe I did that.
Oh, yeah, we, um, we received. Six hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents for our metal. On the metal bin, went in, and we received a check for six hundred and forty.
Lovely.
Yeah, nice, huh?
I'm trying, I'm doing my part.
Even send my tin cans in.
Well, you're the one who told me to do that, Bob. You heard me, put them in the.
When I was there.
Oh, we can do it again, and I'm like, oh, okay.
You have. Amanda's bill.
Then forwarded it to me.
Okay.
It's like how often I've been forwarding bills, Carrie.
Do you see, I said, I think I sent this to you, um, an email about building codes. And, um, some sort of a task force to look at. Saw that, yes. I don't wanna really get involved with that, but I'm hoping it's not pushing us in that direction.
Do we do, uh, did we follow you back? Do we, oh, you should.
Nope.
Yeah.
We're small.
For the residents.
We're under.
Yeah, you're under. Yeah.
I'm just. Watching that kinda stuff. And the other thing, um. Lynn Martin did our, uh, safety program.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And she mentioned, and I don't know if I sent that to you guys, that, um, the Bureau of Labor making their inspections now. Are not giving any leniency. So in the past, it would come in like to the fire department and they would see it, say, uh, uh, electrical plate was missing. They would fine you like two hundred bucks. You put the plate on, they'd write it off. Not gonna do that anymore. So. Uh, I've asked her to send, uh, how much it would cost for her to come up and do an inspection of all of places. She did that when we first did the thing.
Yeah.
And that would give us an idea of how we're doing.
Yeah.
So when I get that figure, I'll bring it to you guys.
Thank you.
And Harbor Master, I sent you guys the information on that. It's not something that we're gonna do unless we put it through the town meeting.
Yeah, I think it would be a town meeting thing.
It was kinda interesting, so we did. And that's all I have. Plowing, it was on the North Taylor Road. Anything?
I'm interested in whether or not the answers that I gave for, um, Harper's, um, survey, if those were adequate or if you. Or change everything. They were pretty simple, so. Um, and what I did was I spent about four hours last at the computer going in the mail check. And none of the people's addresses had been listed, so what I did was I printed. Um, our listing from the Harris Real Estate taxes and any names that I could verify, I went in and put the addresses in there to kinda get those figures that I came up with. They're not accurate, because I'm sure probably another half of that two hundred that I showed, I can't identify our residents. By their email, I can't tell who they are, um, but, but that really was the factual. The factual information that I could come up with. And that's what it is. So if you guys are okay with that, that information, I will ship that right back off to Harbor at some point tomorrow.
Couple of things.
And if you guys wanna get, look at it and give it to me tomorrow, I'm not gonna do anything with it tonight.
Okay.
That way you have an easy gym, things are in there, I can certainly add those on the app. But she did have some, you know, pretty good questions.
Uh, the only other thing, uh, in the main townsmen, which you guys haven't read yet, cause they're up there. They are warning people about cyber, uh, cyber, cyber security. In the know. Scott, Eric has talked to me about it. And. Mike needs some talking. We should come up with a, an ordinance of something, policy. Something to, you know, that they talked quite a bit about it in this.
One of the things that I, I got in my email here was actually, your document is ready to be assigned. Please open this doc sign.
Yes, you gotta be watching what you're opening.
Got to be watching what the promise. Is it worth saying? Carrie Casey, but you look at the prom, prom.
Yeah, it's an email. Well, what I'll do tomorrow, when I get that office, I will. I will email you what we have for an IT inter, internet policy, um, and it goes, it's like sandwiches.
Yeah.
That'll give you at least something to start on, maybe, but it's pretty.
Pretty. Between like Carl and Paul and, and Scott. Between like Carl and Paul and Scott, they should be able to come up with something.
Yeah, yeah, at least that'll give you something to start with, yeah.
Stronger password. Stuff like that.
Yeah, was any of that included in that last?
I was trying to.
I just don't remember off the top of my head.
I know, I know they started, but I don't think they went through it. Another thing they talked about was .gov instead of .org. Much safer. And when you, when you're giving that .gov out, it's it's more reassuring to those that are receiving it.
I did talk to Scott some about that, and he had some concerns about what it would cost to do that, we'd have to redo the website and.
Yeah, I don't know how much, how much it would do, how much time and effort it would be to, to make a change like that.
I, I think because it's, we have like the registration, our registration all embedded in that, in the Harris the property taxes more. He seemed to think it was a bigger deal than what it sounded. So.
It may be worth it, but well, yeah.
Well.
I don't think it's that big a job to transition everything to a new website. I mean, it's not trivial, but
Yeah.
I'm happy to do it. They're changing our email over to .gov. That's a different story.
Yeah.
You know, maybe. It can't be that hard.
Actually, I will tell you, from my standpoint, it, it's going to be a real challenge, because so many of the security, all the bank stuff, the EFTPF, or the IRS and all is set up. I'd have to reapply for all of those, because it's based on email and it's not interchangeable, you can't switch the email.
Well, you can, you can use GovOffice, which is .gov, which I know Manchester does, I believe Reeffield does, maybe Fayette still does. And that does give you a .gov, and that's a very easy website to come up with, and it wouldn't interfere with any of your any of your emails.
But the, the thing is, we would want to change to treasure@mtburnin.gov.
Yeah.
You, you want to do that.
Oh, 'cause you're web based, that's why, yeah, I see, yeah.
The domain you want to change.
Yeah, I see, I see, you're adding out.
Yeah, so.
MMA is, you know, pretty much.
I think there's money, too. They're willing to give out money or something.
Really?
But we probably should have a discussion with Scott before we go into the budget stuff, because we're talking about what things would have to be thought about.
They had another article about public works. It was the, right now, anything over a hundred thousand dollars on roadwork, you need to have a perpetual engineer, a PE, sign off on the project. As of end 25, 23, basically anything you do will need a PE. The way I read it, I'm gonna send, they have a packet. MMA has a packet, I'll send for that to find out exactly what they're getting at. There's a provision in there that the govern, governing body can override which, there's no way I would wanna override a project and say a PE is not required. So but something that we probably should be looking at.
Yeah.
Anything else? Not here, I'm trying to drag it on. There is a screen screen crossing grant available. And it's due in January, yeah, January. And I don't know that we have enough time to do it, I'm working with Charlie Bader on it.
With seven weeks.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try on that one too.
What size grant was that?
It's 250, no, 200,000. It needs a little bit of a in kind. Minimum is 5,000 in kind. Terribly bad.
Yeah.
Can you apply for it, because we wouldn't have the five, five grand in kind until.
I know. I know.
So you can't really commit to that.
I know.
Okay.
How does any town do it without in kind?
We, we're applying.
Oh, I can't think what the fund is.
No, don't we have the like?
We have that money.
Grant matching.
Yeah.
We have that money left over from the village. Village problem. 10,000 there.
Well, it says in kind too for the match. Meaning like labor, right? Not money.
Right.
So Lee was like doing a project, yeah.
Right. That would probably require a PE, which we would get, because Derago would be involved. And it will probably require Army Corps, which would be our first delving into that. We'll get some education.
Hmm. Um. I can reach out to our insurance friends about Kathy's question about.
After school.
After school and about swimming lessons.
Yep.
Anything else I should ask them about while I?
No.
To them.
Yeah, the, the after school project should be fine if we just make it part of the rec program, program.
Hmm.
Right? Out of the athletic program.
Okay. Well, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. If they, yeah, if it comes under the because there's no money now, unless we have a special town meeting, you can tell us. But yeah, if it comes under the athletics. They would be covered. But yeah. That would be really good.
Right.
For an after school project. I can't think of anything else. And nothing helps this week, next two weeks, nothing. The shed comes in on the 21st.
What size was this shed?
What's that, eight by eight?
Another question. It doesn't require permit?
That's below the square footage.
10 by 10. 10 by 10, yeah. I already checked it.
We wanna provide an update on the antenna that's going up here?
I can, the structure for the fire department auxiliary antenna is up, I would say there's probably seven sections. So it's probably up about seven, eight feet, maybe? And the antenna would go on the top of that.
And is there any expected date that it goes operational?
No, they're quite, quite slow process. One thing I would suggest though, is when we do start getting into our budget, I would suggest a new stairway made out there. And probably put pavement down to extend pavement from the driveway up to the stairs. Just so it's.
You want to do that because it's I thought the sewer pipe was under there, so you don't wanna pave over that, do you?
No, it would go if you look at it now, the steps come down, hey, break straight down to the.
Just like a halfway.
Yeah, and that's something Lee can do.
Okay.
I hope he's listening. He did a really good job, there was a, a real bad section on the Javi Loos road. Just as you turn to go onto the Javi Loos and go, starting to go down, there was a section there that was just awful, it was just all broken up. And it was probably 15 feet, maybe 20 feet. So he went and got a, a load of pavement, not that patch stuff. And he spread it down, used his little equipment and made a nice section in there.
Nice.
So, yeah, he could do the same thing.
Okay.
And he didn't get the chance to do in front of the community center. But we'll have to work on that in the spring.
I finally noticed the trees driving by there this weekend, I was like, I remembered a lot. Like, oh yeah, those are close.
Yes, and they're doing like Christmas tree lighting.
Oh, yeah. Friday. Friday, Friday.
I double checked that.
Friday at six o'clock.
I thought that was odd, so I double checked that.
Yep.
No. And Spadey's is gonna be.
Yeah, providing.
Some snacks, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's pretty nice. Um, that reminds me, Tina, did you, have you gotten any reports yet from any of the town committees?
Oh.
Okay, not yet. I'll send reminder, I'll wait a couple weeks then I'll refer it right there.
Well, it's a good time right between the two holidays. Don't wanna let it go too close, then you'll have to wait till after.
That's true, after, okay, I'll remind them sooner.
My two three, yeah, my three sections are all done. I just give them due.
And I'll just give whoever's the next in line. I'm waiting, I'm ready. I mean, I can, you guys are the only ones I ever wait for. You mean, I could have had that out too late, not much.
Waiting, waiting.
About it?
I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn. We're done.
Great, thanks everyone online, thank you, Mark.